I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, June 10, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, which has been duly noticed in two places, including the city's website, in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. The prayer tonight will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Govea will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemens.
Alderman Sennett.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Eleven present, four absent.
I did hear from Alderwoman Kelly and Alderman Lopez that they weren't able to join us this evening. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchis and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Well, first, I wanted to touch upon the false rumor, the false rumor that a Chinese company has or is in the process of or has bought Pennachuck Water Works. Now, I don't know where this story started. All members on the Board of Aldermen here know that that couldn't possibly be true without, because the Board of Aldermen would have to approve a sale. And we, I don't know where it started, but no one has ever approached the city about buying Pennachuck, anyone from China, the United States, or anywhere else. And if they did, the answer would be, I'm sure from everyone, a very resounding no. We're not going to sell the water company. So that is completely a false rumor. Now, apparently, a Chinese company did buy some property in Nashua and may intend to create a water bottling operation, but they submitted a plan to the planning board, which they have now withdrawn. So it's unclear to us what they're intending. And the sale took place, you know, as a private sale in the private market. The city was not a participant in that in any way. But next, Madam President, I wanted to address one of the issues that's on the agenda tonight, which is R-25168, which has to do with the master development agreement for the Nimco property. This is a project that would contribute to the desperately needed supply of housing. We desperately need new housing because of rising rents and rising housing costs. This would provide 20% affordable units, a total of about 300. The, it's been nine years on this to get this to this point, when the then Broad Street Parkway and now Veterans Memorial Parkway was completed or substantially completed in the, at the end of 2015, and when the ribbon was cut. The Nimco building was owned by the city, and as a result of some changes that occurred in the root of the, of the Parkway, and the, and the city owned much of the land below the, below the building, but not all of it. And a gentleman from China, or it's not China, Canada in this case, with two different entities, was the less E of the building and was the owner of a portion of the land underneath. And he was bound and determined to try to keep the property, although he had not paid the city rent in a long time. And Celia Leonard can fill in all the details regarding the many different litigations there were to secure ownership of the building. But it involved first, first, he sued the city for $25 million. Then that was dismissed. Then we, the city, sued him for back rent. We got a judgment. Then we needed to try to enforce, but he had two different entities, one in, one in Canada, one in Panama, I think. So we had to try to consolidate those entities so we could collect the rent, the back rent, or apply the back rent to the value of the property below the, the, the building. Finally, that was secured, that was obtained. There was an auction, and it went on and on and on. In any event, after all of that was completed, and the city owned both the land and the building, we put this site out for RFP. We had a committee consisting of a couple of aldermen and others from the staff who interviewed potential developers, narrowed that down to one, and the Board of Aldermen subsequently approved a purchase and sale agreement to this LMG. And now, over the course of time, Celia Leonard has negotiated a master development agreement. Now, there were a couple of questions raised regarding the, this came to the Finance Committee, which approved the, the, the deal. But there were a couple of questions that came up regarding whether the owner ultimately would charge the tenants who were in the off-price units, the affordable units, for parking. And I think, as we've inquired from the owner or the developer, they're not sure of their plans and how they're going to finance it. But they need to construct parking because the city asked them to maximize the number of units, given the acute housing need that we have. So they maximized the number of units to about 300, which required them to construct parking as opposed to just have it on the ground, and far less units, 100 or 150, as opposed to the 300. They did that. But I think that certainly, no deal is a perfect deal, and this is probably not a perfect deal. But I look at this as a situation where, were this not to be approved, which I hope it will be, this would, it would be a case of the perfect, the perfect is the enemy of the good, I think is the phrase. This is a good deal. It adds to the supply of housing. It'll bring people to live downtown. There will be affordable units. And in the end, it will be a great project for the city. So I hope you will support the development agreement. The, Liz Hanham is here to answer any questions about this, possibly others, if you have them. I see that Alderman Clemens may be on the Zoom, and he may have some questions. But I think we, I hope that we can go ahead after nine years and approve housing for the Nimco site. Next, Madam President, a couple of quick things. I wanted to mention a couple of new businesses opened right on Main.
Can I have a question? We were here at the Unsung Hero Award, and we were told that it was going to be present at the beginning of this meeting.
Well, we'll get to that. We're going to get to that.
It's just a few minutes.
So a couple of new businesses opened on the Main Street. One was The Spot, which is a non-alcoholic entertainment establishment. You can get very creative drinks there. I was there for ribbon cutting a few days ago, and it's run by Mike McDowell, who has put a lot of work and effort into this, and I hope and believe it'll be a success. And then further down the street on, in the former Sears building, between, or near the Tostos Restaurant, there is the, a toy store called Retro, Rolos Collectibles. And the guy who's running that is a Nashua native who is, or he's lived here a long time since, since middle school, and he, he's selling both contemporary and also toys from the past. So that is sort of an interesting business. He says he's doing pretty well. And now, finally, Madam President, I wanted to get to the, to thank the, what we call the Mayor's Volunteer Recognition Committee, who has worked hard to consider which of our many volunteers in the community deserve this year's Gate City Light Award. The committee that, the Mayor's Committee is run by Sarah Caesar, and they have selected the Humane Society to receive this year's award. And the Humane Society has been serving the Nashua community in terms of taking care of animals that don't have homes for many, many years, has done a great job under many different leaders, and certainly are very well deserving of the award. And I know, Madam President, we will get to that in just a couple of minutes. And I believe Sarah Caesar is here to make the, to make the award. Sarah is with the United Way, who has taken over a lot of the, a lot of the responsibility for this, and I want to thank them for that as well. And that, with that, Madam President, I would, I, with that, Madam President, I conclude.
Thank you. Responses to the remarks of Mayor. Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to comment to the mayor's remark about R-25168, about the master development agreement. I'll leave my comments more precise when we, when we get to, to that discussion. But just to, for full disclosure, I did speak to Director Hanham after, after the meeting, and I got more information. And I think it will be more enlightening when we finally do get to that. So I, to, to add to what the mayor has to say, I have a, a different point of view than I did during that meeting. So I do agree with what the mayor has to say. So I just want to follow up on, on his comments. So thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one second, one quick second. I just wanted to recognize the Retro, the Retro Toy Store. I did go in there and speak with him as well, and just to see how the business was going, because it was, you know, unique to Main Street, and they even, you know, spent 99 cents on a pack of hockey cards. But I'm hoping he does well, because I like to see something unique on Main Street. So it's kind of cool.
Anyone else? Okay. Recognition period. Oh, I'm sorry. I want to recognize that Alderman Clemens joined us via Zoom at 7:32. Alderman Clemens, did you want to remark on the mayor's comments?
Thank you, Madam President. No, I just wanted to announce that I am here, participating remotely due to work, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Thank you.
And I apologize for being late.
Okay. Recognition period.
Gate City Light Award.
I'm going to recognize the mayor. Listen to the court.
Well, Sarah here?
Oh.
So this is Sarah Caesar from the United Way, and.
Need the microphone?
Mike?
Okay.
This is Sarah Caesar from the United Way, and she is going to really make the award on behalf of the committee. I want to thank the committee members for working so hard on this and doing this every year. And you fulfill a very important responsibility because the volunteers across many organizations do so much for the community. And it is just nice to pick someone out who's done, done something special each year in order to just give them the recognition that they really deserve. So with that, I will give it over to Sarah.
Thank you, Mayor Donchis. So I would like to invite our award winners to come up. We have three different groups that are going to be winning awards. The first is the Humane Society for Greater Nashua. The second is the Nashua Senior Activity Center, and then the third is the Plus Company. And I will kind of describe what we're awarding them for after they, after they come up, because I do have actual awards to hand to people. Yeah, everybody can come up. And I see some people taking pictures, so that's excellent. So each year, the Mayor's Volunteer Recognition Committee has the privilege of selecting recipients for the Gate City Light Award, which celebrate organizations that shine a light on our community through service, compassion, and dedication. These awards are based on public nominations and reflect the deep appreciation Nashua residents have for those who serve. This year's Gate City Light Award winner, which is the primary award, is the Humane Society for Greater Nashua, in recognition for their remarkable volunteer-supported efforts to care for and protect animals while strengthening the bonds between pets and people in our community. I do have a delightful trophy here. I apologize. They should have had a table for it, but there you go. You're quite welcome. Juggling too many things. Our runner-up for this year is the Nashua Senior Activity Center, which is a vibrant hub of connection and wellness for older adults, where volunteers play a vital role in enriching lives every single day. And I have a certificate here that I would like to hand to them. And finally, we're proud to present the Unsung Hero Award to the Plus Company, whose consistent, quiet work in empowering individuals with disabilities has a lasting and often unseen impact, exactly the kind of meaningful work this award was created to honor. So the Plus Company. No, I just need a good picture. Steve, 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 look this way. Oh, you didn't want a more. No, no, we just, we just have this picture.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the
minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of May 13, May 14, May 29, and June 3, 2025, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Kevin Burgess, Board of Fire Commission Chairman, regarding referral from Board of Aldermen, Resolutions R-25-150 and R-25-153. Communication has been received from Chief Rourke, Kevin, Chief Kevin Rourke, regarding Resolution R-25-149, Nashua Police Department Roof Repair Replacement. Communication has been received from Lisa M. Photo, Director of Public Works, regarding budget transfer to DPW Street Department to Parks Department. Communication has been received from Lisa M. Photo, Director of Public Works, regarding referrals from Board of Aldermen Resolution. Communication has been received from Don K. Enright, Treasurer, Tax Collector, regarding July Property Tax Billing. Communication has been received from Sam Durfee, AICP Planning Manager, regarding referral from the Board of Aldermen on Resolution R-25-174, authorizing the purchase and sale agreement of 44 Broad Street. Communication has been received from Jennifer McCormick, Library Director, regarding referral from Board of Aldermen Resolution R-25-147. Communication has been received from Sam Durfee, AICP Planning Manager, regarding referral from the Board of Aldermen on Resolutions R-25-159, R-25-160, R-25-161, R-25-166, any amended petition for street discontinuance regarding a portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Without objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for two communications that were received after the agenda was prepared.
Communication has been received from Lisa M. Photo, Director of Public Works, regarding authorizing amendments to death benefits in the Board of Public Works Retirement System. And communication has been received from Deb Chisholm, Sustainability Department Manager, regarding Resolution R-25-146, hydroelectric improvements, bond 500,000.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have three speakers signed up. Paula Johnson.
Good evening, members of the Board of Aldermen. My name is Paula Johnson. I reside at 15 West Horn Drive. I'm here to speak in regards to R-25-144, 145, 146, 147, 149, 150, 151, 123, 5, 6, 59, 61, and 62. If you add up all these resolutions, it comes to $19,150,000 worth of bonding. R-25-144 is a Walnut Street Oval and Intersection Project in West Pearl Street. Streetscaping has a price tag of $2 million. But if it is amended, we'll be looking at a small bond amount of $600,000, and we will be eliminating streetscaping. $600,000 is a small amount of money. Do we really need to bond it? At Ward Five Meeting, Town Hall Meeting, I mentioned that all the money in the city is going to upgrade downtown, and yet West Holler Street is a disaster. R-25-151, $5,500,000, has to do with the design of the new DPW garage, which will be moved to the landfill, and more traffic would be going up on West Holler Street, with no plans, because we don't have the money to fix West Holler Street Corridor. But I have to say, and I have to thank the mayor for a wonderful compliment, he did say that it's because of advocates like Ms., like Paula, as well as some of the other traffic accidents that motivate us to move forward, to take a look at the corridor and come up with a plan for improvements. And yet, nothing to date will be done, or maybe this fall, because we don't have the money. Said it's with all this bonding, bonding, we are leaving for our children, our grandchildren, some great-grandchildren of ours, a great huge amount of bonding debt for them to repay. 6% in our taxes this year, and next year, 2026, is going to be assessments of our property again. It seems that us taxpayers and seniors never get a break in this city. Now, I want to talk about R-25-168. I went to that meeting regarding the Nimco property. Although, something was said to me very rudely that night by an alderman, I believe the Nimco property really needs to be the hub of high technology and technology for business. Because back when I was on this board, Alderman Wiltshire would remember, and I'm sure Turney Bolton would remember, when we had only retail and a lot, and people worked at retail and McDonald's, and I said, you can't live on $7.08 an hour. But what do we have in this city now? We have retail casinos and still McDonald's. But what we need is, we need to bring the high-skill jobs back into the city. So when we say, well, how come all our kids are leaving? They're leaving to live in Mass, to work in Massachusetts. They live here, and yet the money doesn't flow into the city. And we can't expect people to live in the city if we don't have high-paying jobs to keep them here. They'll come and live, but they work in Massachusetts. And so the, the deal is, and I thought it was, that that technology area was supposed to be for jobs. And I think it's about time we look at jobs coming back into the city, the highest-paying jobs versus more housing at this point in time. Thank you.
Michael, I can't read the last name. Devon, maybe? Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Michael Devon. I work for Blaylock Holdings. Blaylock Holdings is the development team that's leading the Mohawk Tannery remediation and redevelopment effort. I'm joined here tonight with Bernie Plant, founding member of Blaylock, as well as principal of Blaylock Holdings. I've been before a number of committees in, in support of the three pieces of legislation that's before the board. And I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for your effort that you've put into this tremendous project, as well as recognize the, the city staff that has been dedicated for several years, if not longer, on, on the Mohawk Tannery project, specifically Director Cummings, Director Sullivan, Corporation Counsel Leonard, Engineer Hudson, Sam Durfee, Planning Manager Amy DeRoche, and then the countless other staff members that have been behind the scenes throughout. We, we couldn't have gotten to this point without their effort and without your effort. Just briefly, we, we're rounding third base on the Mohawk project. We have resubmitted our 100% design. We expect final approval this month. And that's a 2,400-page document that will set the stage for our closing to begin in the summer, and then remediation shortly to follow. Legislation before you, it's a number of areas, but all the committees thus far have recommended it. And it's necessary to enable us to do what we need to do to clean up the city, specifically Mohawk, the little Florida neighborhood, and put that land to good use so that it can generate taxes for the city, as well as provide much-needed housing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Beth Skare?
Okay. Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. I'm here to ask you to hold off on the million-dollar bond for the next phase of the library design. I've been attending the Nashville Library Trustees' meetings for several years, as well as the, all the events they've been having about the library renovations and the courtyard. And I've heard many times that the library is an awful disrepair after more than 50 years without proper maintenance, and the HVAC system is very near the end of its life. But a few years ago, a contractor presented a design for the renovation of the library, and it looked like a great plan, but it was just too expensive, more than $30 million. And I'm sure it would be a whole lot more now with inflation. So that was shelved. Then, there was a proposal by Director of Economic Development Liz Hanham to put out an RFP for a public-private partnership to build a facility on the library property that would host both the library and a private business, such as housing, or restaurant, or retail. But that RFP was never put out, so that option was never explored. Why are we back to investing again in a renovation that the city can't afford? Instead, I'm asking the city, if the city could pursue the RFP process and see where that leads, and hold off investing any more of our tax money on a project that isn't going anywhere? Thanks.
That's the end of public comment. Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from Dan Healy, City Clerk, regarding issuance of warrant to Chief of Police for unlicensed dogs.
Alderman Jettie.
So I move to accept, place on file, and commit the warrant to the Chief of Police to issue the civil forfeiture for unlicensed dogs by roll call. And I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Jettie.
So this is the annual procedure where, required by state law to people who don't pay their, to issue, to license their dogs. pay their, to issue, to license their dogs, they're subjected by state law. State law requires that we notify them, and then if they don't pay within a certain period of time allowed, then their dogs can be seized, and so they're brought to the Humane Society, which just received an award coincidentally. And then they have a certain, I think it's, so I don't remember the exact time, but whatever the time is, if they don't pick up their dogs and pay the necessary fees, then the dogs can become the property of the Humane Society, and then the Humane Society can put them up for adoption. So I ask that you support this and vote favorably. Thank you.
You've heard the motion. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
11 yeas, 1 nay.
That motion carries. Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Appointment by the President of the Board of Alderman, KEIF Auditorium Commission, Joe Ola Ferovic, 35 Newberry Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060. Appointments by the Mayor, Downtown Improvement Committee, Philip Sconces. Reappointment term to expire December 1st, 2027. 14 Ashland Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Mind Falls Park Advisory Committee, Walter Davis. New Appointment, term to expire July 22nd, 2028. Q1 Snow Circle, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. Kimberly Greiglich, New Appointment, term to expire July 22nd, 2028. 7 Denver Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03063.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of Committees, there being no objection, I will declare the reports of the May 15th and May 20th, 2025 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 12th, 2025 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of Mayor's Appointments?
KEIF Auditorium Commission.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the following new appointments to the KEIF Auditorium Commission. Dan O'Donnell, 49 Cobbett Lane Hollis, with a term to expire May 13th, 2027. Sean Smith, Nashville High School South, 38 Riverside Street, Nashua, with a term to expire May 1st, 2028. And Dennis Schneider, 32 Clearview Drive, Nashville, with a term to expire June 10th, 2028. I see some individuals here. If any of those individuals are here, please come forward to take the oath of office. Come right up, right up to the attorney.
I thought you were on a brick. Anyways, both of you, raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties that come upon you as a member of the KEIF Auditorium Commission, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire, so help you God? Thank you. Thank you.
Nashua Center for the Arts Board of Trustees.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointments of the following to the Nashville Center for the Arts Board of Trustees. Amber Logan, Amber Morgan, 20 Lock Street, Nashua, with a term to expire May 1st, 2030. And Abdallah J. Mankara, 13 Mount Pleasant Street, Nashua, with a term to expire April 30th, 2030. I don't know if either one of them are here this evening. Nope, they will both be sworn in at a later date.
Cultural Connections Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Bernadette Melton Plant, 41 Parish Hill Drive, Nashville, with a term to expire April 30th, 2028, to the Cultural Connections Committee. Is Bernadette here this evening? She will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-25-144 amended, authorizing the Mayor and City Treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $2 million for the Walnut Street Oval Intersection Project in West Pearl Street, streetscaping.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend R-25-144 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of amendments made at the Budget Review Committee by roll call, please. And could I speak to it?
You can.
Thank you. Last week, I think it was last week, yes, we took up this resolution, and it was originally at $2 million. And after some discussion, we had made a motion, and it did pass committee, to reduce it by 1.4 million. Thus you have a bonding amendment for $600,000. And what this does, what the $600,000 does, is it fully funds the Walnut Street Oval project. As it was explained to us by Dan Hudson, that's mostly, it's about a $5 million project. The city's on the hook for about a million, and this fulfills, that gets us to the million. So we have, will now have enough money to complete that project. What we left off to the side was the Pearl Street, streetscaping and improvements. And we had decided, three years ago, we had made a bonding resolution to put some money aside for that, for that plan. This would have added to that. And it was, it was discussed in committee, and we decided to leave that off to the side, only because the plan seemed a little murky. It's in a TIF district. There is some money in the TIF that could go towards that bond. Bottom line is, was a little bit murky. We made the motion to take it out, take it out, and just bond this and move forward with the Walnut Street Oval. So I would ask for your support tonight.
Motion is to amend. Is there further discussion on that motion? Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for clarification, the West Pearl Street is not completely in the TIF district. Only portion of it is in the TIF district. So we need to keep that in mind. So to do the streetscaping, it can't completely be taken from the TIF. And we do need to keep that in mind if we remove this, this money from it. And my concern is that I don't know how much has already been spent out of the money that has been pushed from the original bond. And I don't know how much of that we would, we would lose. So I'm not sure how, I was at that meeting. I see the savings of it. I'm not quite sure how I'm going to vote on it. I'm glad to save every penny possible for it, but I want to make it clear that this is not completely in the TIF district, and I don't know how that would, how we would do that. So we need to be clear on this. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with my two colleagues have said, but when this first approached the Infrastructure Committee, it came under two projects, streetscaping on West Pearl Street and with the Walnut Street Oval. They both complement each other. It was heard in the committee, they took it out. This is a retroback to archaic thoughts at one time by members of the Alderman, when we had the spending cap, "Oh, we can't do this," and different things. And chances to beautify the city went by the wayside. Okay? The streetscaping were enhanced, and it was the first of many streetscapings that would have occurred to beautify our downtown. When you take a picture of Nashua that you want to sell to somebody, you want to sell them a postcard, where are you going to go? You go to places like Greeley Park, because it's so beautiful. But you also come to Main Street, and you take the picture of Main Street and the beautification and the way that it is. It's our stamp of our community. This saving of $1.4 million is wonderful, but it doesn't do the streetscaping. And it's like, as I say, go back to an archaic time. But here's the deal, when we do finally do the streetscaping of West Pearl Street, it's not going to cost us $1.4 million. It'll cost us a lot more money. Anytime you delay a construction project, add on the dollars when you do decide to do it again. So I am going to support this, because it came out of the committee, but I'm just want you to understand, if we in the future are going to do the West Hollis Street project, and I agree with Alderman Cle what she said, it's, you know, West Pearl Street's only partial into the TIF and everything, but when that is done in the future, just be prepared for the escalated costs that you're supporting. Thank you.
Motion is to amend. Alderman Dowd.
Alderman Sullivan mentioned it briefly, but it's an 80/20 federal city match project, and that oval is dangerous, especially the intersection with Pearl Street. And I've seen close calls, I don't know how many accidents have been there, but I've seen a lot of close calls, and we're long overdue for fixing that oval. So I fully support this.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to, you know, there was mention of money savings, and I can understand and respect that. But for this, I mean, I fully expect to see another bonding resolution come before budget with West Pearl Street in mind. The only reason we set it off to the side for this resolution is there was money that was spent out of that first resolution back in 2022. There is money in the TIF. How much can we use? I don't know if we can use a dollar. I don't know if we can use any of it. And then, how much is this program going to cost so we can finish it? You know, I think that it, I just, I just wanted to point that out, that I fully expect to see a bonding resolution come before the Board for that. We just, I think we need to strategize on this project a little bit, then come back and bond the amount that we need for that project. So I just wanted to say that.
Motion is to amend. Further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, would the clerk call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
12 yeas, 1 nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-144 as amended, effective July 1, 2025, by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
11 yeas, 1 nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-144 is declared duly adopted as amended, effective July 1, 2025.
Second reading of R-25-145, authorizing the Mayor and City Treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1 million for signal coordination and implementation.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-145, effective July 1, 2025, by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Thibodeau.
If I remember correctly, listening to the meeting, there's a federal grant associated with this as well. Can anybody answer that, if I remember correctly?
I can answer that, Madam Chair.
Oh, Mr. Hudson, please.
Yes, yes, Dan Hudson, City Engineer. Yes, you're correct. This, like the previous project, is an 80/20 match with DOT, so the portion you're approving would be the city match towards the full project.
That's it? Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the rule, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
11 yeas, 1 nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-145 is declared duly adopted, effective 7/1/25.
Second reading of R-25-146, authorizing the Mayor and City Treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $500,000 for hydroelectric improvements.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-146, effective July 1, 2025, by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49. Speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, we had discussion about this. There's a number of things involved, and this money is needed to do the work we need to keep getting power from our hydroelectric improvements.
Motion is for final passage. Further discussion? Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I was, I think I was the lone holdout on this at the Budget Review Committee. The vote came up where I felt there was still some questions, some murkiness to the subject at hand. I want to thank Deb Chisholm and Matt Sullivan for providing a very thorough breakdown of that via communication today. I had the opportunity to read over that, and I'll be happily supporting this decision.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
12 yeas, 1 nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-146 is declared duly adopted, effective 7/1/25.
Second reading of R-25-147, authorizing the Mayor and City Treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $1 million for library building project design.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-147, effective July 1, 2025, by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I fully expect to support this, as I did in committee, but it was mentioned in public comment about the RFP for public-private sponsorship, and I was curious about that. And I did notice that Director Hanham was in the audience.
Director Hanham?
Yes. Liz Hanham, Economic Development Director. Yes, it was addressed, and it is still in the plan. The library asked me to wait for their space needs study to be completed, which should be in the next week or two here, before we go out to RFP for a public-private partnership option. That will be in conjunction with this, and so we are moving forward, assuming that that may or may not yield anything. But if it does, we're hoping to get that done immediately, so that we won't spend any of that before, that million dollars before, or needlessly, sorry. There we go.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea. Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Eleven yays, one nay.
Motion carries, and Resolution 25-147 is declared duly adopted effective 7/1/25.
Second reading of R-25-149, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $600,000 for roof repair replacement at Police Department Headquarters.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 25-149 effective July 1, 2025 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49. Speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, this roof definitely needs roof repair. And as I've mentioned at the budget meeting and other times, you know, fixing the roof is one cost. If you don't fix it and things get wet inside the building, that number triples or quadruples. So it's very important to get this wrapped up and get the roof repaired.
Motion is for final passage. Further discussion on that motion? Alderman Thibodeau.
For clarification, this is to do the actual work. This isn't just for planning or this won't take care of the actual repairs to the roof.
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-149 is declared duly adopted effective 7/1/25.
Second reading of R-25-150, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $2 million for fire department roof repair replacement at five locations in HVAC improvements.
Sorry, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to motion for final passage of R-25-150 effective July 1, 2025 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49. And may I speak briefly?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes. The fire department has some leaky roofs, and I want you all to keep in mind, it's the only real municipal building that people do live in. Our firefighters live in each one of these stations. So when the roof leaks, it destroys the building, our infrastructure. And it also can destroy equipment and different things like that. So a lot of these roofs didn't fail overnight, you know, and it's time to fix them. And because it's livable quarters, now today, you know, when I first started on the fire department, you had to get written permission from the chief to plug in an air conditioner, and whether it was granted or not. Now today, we value our air, and so the station's now coming with HVAC. So therefore, they need to maintain. They sometimes fail. So this is a worthwhile project, and we're doing several buildings with this. So it'll be a step to keep our fire stations up to the snuff for a long time. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-150 is declared duly adopted effective 7/1/25.
Second reading of R-25-151, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $5,500,000 for the Public Works Division garage design.
Alderman Tebow.
I'd like to make a motion to re-refer R-25-151 to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on further amendments to the legislation by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49, and I would not like to speak to it.
And you would not like to speak to it? Okay, motion is to re-refer. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Second reading of R-25-152, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $3 million for Holman Stadium improvements.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 25-152 effective July 1, 2025 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49. If I could speak to it briefly?
Alderman Sullivan.
During, thank you, during the Budget Committee, it was mentioned that Holman Stadium, a jewel in the crown of Nashua, the condition of such is about a C minus. You gave a different grade, President, and we'll share.
I did. Sorry.
However, this $3 million, while a lot of the improvements will not be seen to the naked eye or the visitor to Holman Stadium, it does bring our grade point average up to a C plus. So I think that is money well spent, and I'll be supporting it. Thanks.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I was hoping this one would be the one I could speak to. I was coaching there just last week, and so I was looking at the lights and the bent light pole that, you know, we need to fix right away because otherwise it's going to, yeah, fall down. And we know what happened with Stellows. I mean, we get criticized for not jumping quickly into Stellows. Those same people are probably yelling at us right now for spending this money. But it's older than Stellows. It's historic. It was left to us by the Holman family, who was, you know, there for their parents, who, one of them was the mayor of the city at the time, or at one point before that. It does need work, and I think Mr. Conan, Director Conan, said, "This is just a small amount to fix the things that really need to be fixed right now." Those lights are over 50 years old, and so I hope everybody supports this. At some point later on, we're going to need more money to be put into there. But for now, I think this will get us to at least that, you know, like they said, C-level grade. Thank you.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. My colleague to the left of me said exactly what I had said at the Budget Review Committee. We were criticized, and it went back and forth whether it was the Aldermen or the Board of Ed when it came to Stello Stadium. You know, everybody was pointing fingers, says who was to blame. The Board of Aldermen will take it in the shorts for this one if we don't spend the money on this and continue to spend the money to fix Holman Stadium. So it's fix it or close it. I would rather fix it. So I hope my colleagues will follow the recommendation of the committee and vote yay for this one. So thank you very much.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to bring up what really put a fine point on this one for me, at the Budget Review Committee, I had asked Mr. Conan what the last significant investment was that had been made in Holman Stadium. And I kind of guessed that he was going to go towards those skyboxes that I had assumed were put in a couple of years ago. And he told me that they were put in in 2003, which definitely is not the year that I graduated high school. So it, that's what, 22 years now? It's time. I had my son there for his first ballgame last summer, and it looks nice from the outside, but you get in there, and it's still a very old structure. So I think this is money well spent. I don't think anybody wants to see Holman go anywhere. And it's been 22 years. I think it's about time we did something, so.
Alderman Tebow.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. I just wanted to bring up something that Alderman Jettie said at the Budget Committee meeting that I was surprised by. You know, he was saying, "How come we can't get revenue generated out of there, like by signs on the walls and things like that?" And to find out that the Silver Knights were getting that money instead of the city, I was like, "Man, I wish there was a way that we could generate other revenue to help pay for some of these things." They're going to come, you know, as the stadium ages. So I just wanted to give him credit for bringing that up and trying to see if there was other ways because I think Director Conan was like, "Yeah, we haven't looked at that." So I think we should look into other avenues also at the same time as spending this money today, so. Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion is for final passage. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 25-152 is declared duly adopted effective 7/1/25.
Second reading of R-25-153, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $3,550,000 for fire and street department capital equipment reserve fund, SURF, purchases.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to motion for final passage of R-25-153 effective July 1, 2025 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-153 is declared duly adopted effective 7/1/25.
Second reading of R-25-156, authorizing the sale of tax-dated property located at 115-117 West Hall Street.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 25-156 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-156 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-159, approving and authorizing execution of the First Amendment to the Master Development Agreement and approving amended master concept plan redevelopment of Mohawk Tannery.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R-25-159 by roll call, and would like to speak to that motion.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. So we had this resolution come through the Planning and Economic Development Committee. Had to do a lot with the lease and purchase of the Parkway parcel. It was my opinion that the amendment was fair and equitable to both sides of this agreement. Now to ask for the body's full approval. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 25-159 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of our dash 25 dash 161, authorizing an amendment to Resolution our dash 72 dash 75, laying out common sewers as it pertains to the redevelopment of land in the Veterans Memorial Parkway Redevelopment, VMPR overlay district.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. A motion for final passage of our 25 dash 161 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 25-161 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of our dash 25 dash 162, authorizing entering into a pledge agreement with the Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority in connection with a bond not to exceed $3,500,000 power amount to be issued by the Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority, redevelopment of Mohawk Tannery.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of our 25 dash 161 by roll call, please.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 25-162 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of our dash 25 dash 164, relative to the acceptance of a scoreboard for Lejoy Field donated to the city by Greater Nashua Little League.
Alderman Tebow.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of our dash 25 dash 164 by roll call and I would like to speak to it.
Alderman Tebow.
I was a Cal Ripken baseball guy, so I'm surprised I got the Little League motion, but I'm just kidding. There's no downside to this. I mean, we have a lovely family that's willing to donate the Moran family. And, I mean, it doesn't cost the city anything, so I think this one should go through easily. Thank you.
The motion? Is there further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 25-164 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of our dash 25 dash 168, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into a master development agreement with Lansing Melbourne Group LLC.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of our dash 25 dash 168 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there a discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
I did want to speak to it, Madam President. I had my.
Sorry, didn't see it. Alderman Clemmons.
That's okay. Thank you. So I just wanted to thank Director Hanham. I had some questions at the committee in regards to the parking for this and how that was going to work, in particular with the low-income portion of the housing development. And it was stated to me by Director Hanham that the preference would be to not have to have them pay for parking, but that the, that was, you know, still up in the air. I respect that opinion. I understand it. I understand that there's other financing that needs to happen behind the scenes. You know, my background is in finance, so I completely understand that. And I, but what I appreciate is the fact that the work was done to get the answers to the questions. And so I just want to thank Director Hanham. And I want to thank also Peter Flo, who I also see is online as well, for both being here and for answering those questions, so, thank you. And I fully, I will support the resolution.
Okay. Further discussion? Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I was not going to add to it, but I am. I too also spoke with Director Hanham. And after my conversation with Director Hanham, I had learned that we have a similar property on Main Street where, the similar situation where the tenants are having to rent parking and so on with a similar situation and that these are smaller units where my initial reaction was that they were going to be larger units and that they would be more family-oriented, which was my concern. So where they're not going to be larger units, where we're going to be dealing with families, I felt more comfortable that this was not going to be a situation that we were going to have a low-income family and then they were going to suddenly now having to pay for parking and that they would be priced out of these units. So I am feeling much more comfortable after speaking with Director Hanham that this is not going to be the situation.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Director Hanham. So in public comment, it was mentioned about this being a tech area. And I know that was, it's not the first time it's come up over the years, that that whole section was supposed to be more of a techs area for tech companies. But that was a long time ago. So can you talk a little bit about maybe why that isn't necessarily or is still viable in that section of town?
Director Hanham.
Thank you. Liz Hanham, Economic Development Director. Yes, we have discussed lots of different options for keeping high-tech jobs in the area. This particular area, I think, has shifted quite a bit over the years from being kind of a high-tech job to, high-tech jobs are kind of everywhere now as opposed to a specific location. However, we're still kind of figuring that out throughout different areas of the community. But the most recent need in the community is housing. And this area lends itself very well to that because it's downtown and near bus stops and things like that. And so the thinking has shifted to more towards housing at this point. However, we do see lots of potential in the area to keep jobs in that Mill Yard area. So this would just be one parcel within the entire area.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 25-168 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of our dash 25 dash 174, authorizing the purchase and sale agreement of 44 Broad Street.
Alderman Jettie.
I move for final passage of our dash 25 dash 174 by roll call and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Jettie.
So 44 Broad Street is at the corner of Broad Street and the Veterans Memorial Parkway. It was land that was originally acquired for the purpose of building the Parkway. And, but it's no longer needed. And since it was obtained using federal funds, the revenue realized from the sale must be returned to the Federal Highway Administration. And so the city is not going to get this money, but the federal government is going to get it. And so it's a purchase and sale agreement arrived at through the use of a broker. And it's $405,000 and the buyer is the Tadros Realty. And the plan is to build a, an office building for a medical office building. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion is for final passage. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 25-174 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O dash 24 dash 042, amending the Land Use Code regarding unrelated household occupancy in single-family dwellings.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for indefinite postponement of O 24 042 by roll call. I'd like to speak to that briefly.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you. After the first reading and some of the feedback we got from the community, some of the discussions held right here in this chamber, after this much time, I've come to the decision that I'm just gonna pull it and I don't believe it's gonna go any further. So I'd like to just have it terminated.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries and Ordinance 2442 is declared indefinitely postponed.
Second reading of O dash 25 dash 053, amended, updating the taxi licensing ordinances.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to motion to amend O 25 dash 053 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of amendment needed to Personnel/Administrative Affairs Committee by roll call, please.
Motion is to amend. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to motion for final passage of O dash 25 dash 053 as amended by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries and Ordinance 2553 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of O dash 25 dash 057, amendments to death benefits in the Board of Public Works retirement system.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of O dash 25 dash 057 by roll call. And may I speak to this motion, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. What we have for force this evening is a very sad set of affairs that when the bylaws and the rules came up for the Board of Public Works pension system, to which I am one of the trustees, your representative, on the Board of Public Works Pension Board. And what we had here is a gentleman go through the process. He wrote and filled out and it was voted on and approved by the Pension Board, his retirement benefits. Unfortunately, the gentleman passed away sadly, three days before the pension, which ended up happening is his widow took from what he originally declared as 60%. She kicked down to, I think, 50%. What this motion will do, will rectify that situation and clearly recognize the wishes of our employee who did state and document and approved again by the Board of Public Works trustees and move it up back to what he declared he wished for his family to have. Again, this is a very rare event. It does not happen often, okay? And we're gonna take a look at some of those requirements as we step into the future, you know, to try to anticipate things like this. But we are joined this evening and would like to recognize the widow with her daughter is here. And I hope that you can join us on the Board of Public Works Retirement System in supporting this and kind of right this wrong and follow the declared wishes of our employee. Thank you.
Motion is for final passage of Ordinance 2557. Discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yays, zero nays.
That motion carries and Ordinance 2457 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of our dash 25 dash 176, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of a donation of $150,000 for park improvements at Park Social and renaming the park Jeff Moran Park.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Govea, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderman O'Brien, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee, Capital Improvements Committee, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, June 23rd, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Aldemonic Chamber.
First reading of our dash 25 dash 177, relative to the transfer of $40,000 from Department 162, Street Lighting Account 54100 Electricity to Department 159, Hydrants Fire Protection Account 54835, Hydrant Fees.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of our dash 25 dash 178, adopting the fiscal year 2026 through 2030 Plan Year 2025-2029, Consolidated Plan for U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Timmons, Alderman Senate, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of our dash 25 dash 179, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Board of Education and the Nashua Teachers Union, Local Number 1044 AFT, AFL-CIO Unit B Para Educators from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cle, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee. Oh, and Alderman Clemmons, sorry.
First reading of our dash 25 dash 180, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Board of Education and the Nashua Teachers Union, Local 1044 AFT, AFL-CIO from September 1st, 2025 through August 31st, 2029.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cle, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of our dash 25 dash 181, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Board of Education and the Nashua School Custodian Union, Local 365, Council 93, AFSMI AFL-CIO from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2029.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cle, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances?
First reading of O dash 25 dash 058, amending the unaffiliated employees' personnel policies with respect to the Fire Department's chief officers' compensation and benefits.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien. You're already a sponsor.
Oh.
Silly. Alderman Govea, Alderman Senate, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Personnel/Administrative Affairs Committee, Director of Financial Services, Human Resources Department, and Personnel Advisory Board with the mayor. Period for general public comment. We have three people signed up. Stephen Skare.
Good evening. Stephen Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. I've got concerns about the homeless encampment we have in Mine Falls off the Pine Street Extension. This is the largest and most elaborate camp I've seen. One residence included a camper, a sheltered deck for grilling and eating, and a canoe off to the side. I'd like to know, first of all, where the people stay in the winter. I'm concerned that some of them leave shelters in spring when the weather gets warm because they don't want to follow the rules regarding alcohol and drugs. And by allowing the summer encampment, we're facilitating drug and alcohol abuse. My other questions are, who authorized this encampment? Can anyone set up an encampment by horseshoe pond? Is this really the best that Nashua can do for the people that are very needy? And something that struck me was there was a mother with a daughter, maybe around six years old, living in a small camper there. For a child, is that really the best situation that we have? And I'm most all concerned that this just popped up like mushrooms. Who's authorizing these things every spring when they come around? Obviously, the city's aware because there was a police vehicle there when I went by. So thank you. I'd appreciate some responses to that.
Paula Johnson.
Good evening. Paula Johnson, again, 15 Westborne Drive. It's sad to see that the Nimco property, we could put housing, we really desperately need good-paying jobs in the city. And I thank the Aldermen for more day for bringing up a question of that. You know, retail and casinos doesn't make a living here. We want to keep our youth in the city. We have to have good-paying jobs in the city. So when they go to college or they go to get a trade, they want to come back here. So, when they go to college or they go to get a trade, they want to come back here. So, I attended that meeting regarding the Nimco property, and I want to tell you to walk up all these steps in the rotunda, it's forty steps, because I do it now because I broke my patilins, good exercise. So, when I got up there, I was a little bit late. I was huffing and puffing. And I happened to be put at the table with Alderman Klee, very nice, and the state rep from Ward One. And I wanted to ask a question. And unfortunately, I was huffing and puffing, and it was said to me that you're talking loud. I didn't think I was talking loud. Everybody in the room was really loud. I was really shocked by what she said to me. She turned to me, and maybe we should close our ears, she said to me, bite me. I said, excuse me? You said that to me? I can't believe a sitting elected official would say that to a private citizen. I didn't want to engage in anything. I walked away, went to the other part of the room, and at the end of the night, I kind of gave my speech that I did here regarding what we need in the city. I think it's sad. I mean, the party of love, we have no hate, you know? Maybe because I called her out that Tuesday regarding the seniors, that here in the city, we're a caring city, we give to everybody, but we don't, and I'm going to hop on this to our seniors. The taxes keep going up, and it's getting harder and harder for us to be able to afford things in the city. We're talking about all these buildings that we need to repair. Holman Stadium, Alderman Wiltshire, Attorney Bolton, we were on the board when we did that big renovation to Holman Stadium. Bernie Streeter did a big ribbon cutting with Congressman Charlie Bass then. It was the gorgeous facility. Our DPW garage, we're going to tear it down, move it up West Holler Street. And how many other buildings in the city? Where is the maintenance plan, I keep asking? There is no maintenance plan because when it gets to a certain age, we tear it down and we start bonding more money, and we build another one for another twenty, thirty, forty years, and then you know what's going to happen? We didn't maintain it, we're going to tear it down again. We own homes, most of us in this chamber. Can you let things go? Do you put a piece of bubble gum in when the water starts dripping and hoping that the dike isn't going to leak? No, we take care of it. In the budget, there should be some type of a maintenance plan. If there's not, then maintenance plan should be written up. And what are we going to do with these buildings? We keep building, and the more we build, the more we bond. The more we bond, the more our taxes go up. Remember, six percent this year, and next year in two thousand and twenty-six, the reassessment comes again. And how many of us are going to be able to afford to live in the city? Thank you very much.
Beth Skare.
Beth Skare, one-eleven East Hobart Street. I attended the constituent listening session for the Nashua Democrat state reps at the library, and I asked them, they were talking about protecting vulnerable people, and I asked them why they didn't vote for HB one four eight, which would protect vulnerable women by allowing sex segregation of spaces of private intimacy, like bathrooms and locker rooms, and also prisons, dorms, shelters, and also it would allow sex segregation of sports. And my rep, Catherine Sofakidis, replied, I'm just going to give you some excerpts. She said that was a divisive political issue that's been elevated to historical proportions to score points, that this is just an issue to stir up, to distract from the stuff in Washington, D.C., to stir up people against each other. It's only point zero one percent of the population, that's tiny, they deserve their privacy, they deserve their constitutional rights, and there's just not the stuff that you're saying, it's just not out there. But we know, I mean, we see cases again and again of women being exposed to men in locker rooms, bathrooms, prisons. Women are being raped in prison by these men. They have, you know, they have their male parts, they're put in there in prison. We need to stop this from happening in New Hampshire. And I, you know, and I also had told them about, reminded them about Stacy Lawton, our former state rep, and how he's charged with abusing children. So, I was really shocked by her response. But I did want to say, the myth about women, men participating in women's sports is that they aren't winning anything. But males participating in women's sports include male athletes who call themselves women, trans women, intersex women, and non-binary, have won over four thousand and four hundred and seventy-two female athletic competitions, including all team sport matches. They have won over eight thousand nine hundred and fourteen women's athletic events. They finish first, second, or third in female competitions than at least seven thousand four hundred and forty-seven times. They have won over two hundred and twenty-four state, three hundred and seventy national, fifty-eight continental, and seventy-one women's world championship titles, including four Olympic gold medals, along with over two hundred victories in other major international competitions. They have sat and reset at least four hundred and thirty-six records, including seventy school records, thirteen state records, one hundred and eighteen national records, and twenty-seven world records. They have stolen over two thousand, two million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and five dollars in prize money from female athletes. You can read this at hecheated.org. Thank you.
Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Yes. Tomorrow evening, we have the committee on infrastructure, so you're all welcome to be here. It'll be held here in the Aldermanic Chamber.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow, we have the Health Committee meeting at eighteen Marbury Street at twelve-thirty.
Alderman Sullivan.
Tomorrow morning, nine o'clock, Room Two-O-eight. The BIDA Building and Industrial Development Authority will meet.
Alderman Tebow.
Thanks, Madam President. We moved over to, we went by Aldermanic remarks, right to committee assignments.
Well, we'll do the, we'll just take it out of order.
Okay.
We'll go back to that. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Any other committee assignments? Okay, none, okay. Remarks by members of the board, I'll start over here tonight. Alderman Dowd? No? Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a few things. The first one being that I think I made a mistake when I talked about La Joy earlier. Looking at the legislation, it doesn't specifically say it was the Morin family, that was for the park. So, I just, whoever donated that money, Little League, they raised money, however they got it, so I just want to correct that. I don't want anybody coming at me. They did a great job getting that money so they could put the scoreboard up. To Mr. Johnson's comments, I'd love to have a tech area in the city, it would be fantastic, but I just think, you know, that time may have passed. I think the world has gone until businesses start building headquarters and places again where people aren't all working all over the country from home, it's going to be hard to do stuff like that. We're going to have to find a different industry that has buildings where they can come to work every day. Maybe it's manufacturing, something like that. I was surprised just now to hear about the, how big the encampments are, and I can't answer any of the questions that he brought up, but I am hoping that we, I assume our health department is looking into it. I hope they are. I mean, I want to make sure our city's safe and things aren't going on that shouldn't be going on. And then, just lastly, I want to make it very clear, we're in Pride Month. I want to make it very clear that just because someone's transgendered doesn't make them a pedophile. There's straight people that are pedophiles of all different shapes, sizes, ages, sexes, whatever, it doesn't matter. So, I just want to make it clear, we're not taking someone who's transgendered and saying they're automatically a pedophile, because that's how it kind of came off. So, I just want to make that very clear, especially when we're in Pride Month, which I think is very important to this city. We have our Pride Parade coming up in a couple of weeks, that, again, we try to stay away from the hate part of all that, and, you know, we should be caring about all citizens, no matter who they are, or what they are, or what they believe. So, thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. I would like to mention the death of Jim Nato, who died at the age of seventy-nine. Jim and I were, you know, friends from the third grade. We went to elementary school together, we graduated from high school together. He went to Boston University on a full scholarship. Then he went to Harvard Law School on a full scholarship. While he was at Harvard Law School, he ran for and was elected to the Nashua Board of Education, and he served a term there. He was a lawyer here, became an expert in real estate law, in real estate development law, and was very well respected as a lawyer. He moved to South Carolina at first, and then Georgia, and where he died in Savannah, Georgia, his funeral was yesterday. So, I just wanted to make note of his passing. Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to start by noting that by the time we all next meet here, full complement, school will be out for the summer. So, in addition to my annual advisory to folks to be mindful of more kids in the street throughout the day as you're coming and going, your morning or evening routine, I also just want to take a moment, should have started tonight, but I guess the weather wasn't cooperating, and congratulate all the graduates of Nashua High, regardless of which side of the river they go to school on. It's certainly a monumental moment for them, and I just want to extend congratulations to them. I felt like I had something else, but I've lost my train of, oh, I did want to piggyback on the comments regarding jobs here in the city and industry. This is something that I've lamented before in a couple of the committees that I serve on. I work in Bedford, right by the Londonderry border, and I travel Raymond Wachorick Drive a lot, and let me tell you, it grinds my gears every time I got to drive by that fancy new New Balance building, and I go, why'd they come here? Why not Nashua? And I don't have the answers yet. I hope one day I can find them, but I'd really love to see what we can do to make Nashua attractive to companies like that, that are expanding their operations or relocating their operations. I work for a company that relocated their operations from Londonderry to a larger facility in Bedford, and I, I don't know, maybe I need to talk to the people up top at my company and see, what could have gotten you down to Nashua? Because I feel like there is something that we're missing, and it's an opportunity for industries to come here and to grow and expand. So, it's definitely a concern on our minds, and I will leave it at that for the time being. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So, this evening, I wanted to just wish everyone a happy Pride Month, and I wanted to point out a thing that happened where the Secretary of Defense, I'm sure with the guidance of President Trump, decided to rename the, one of the ships that was named after Harvey Milk. And Harvey Milk was the first openly gay elected official in the United States, and he was a supervisor of the county of San Francisco in California. He was also, he was also a proud Navy veteran, and he was unfortunately assassinated in a hate crime by one of his former colleagues. So, I find the fact that the timing of the renaming of that ship, which was announced right at Pride Month, to be disturbing, and it was an intentional act to throw, I guess for lack of a better term, to really just throw hate towards the LGBTQ-plus community. And it's really a shame that this has occurred. And, but the ironic part of about it, though, and Dan Rather said this the other night, Harvey Milk was a type of person that he wanted attention towards him, and so when things like this would happen when he was alive, like when he was an activist, he would always tell his detractors, okay, keep talking about me, because the more you talk about me, the more people are going to understand what I stand for and the things that we believe. And so, I find it ironic because I'm sure that from the heavens above, Harvey Milk is laughing right now at the fact that it was a major blunder on Pete Hegseth's part to rename that ship of all times during Pride Month, because it's only going to bring attention to who Harvey Milk was, I mean, I'm a perfect example right here talking about him, and what he stood for. And so, with that, I hope that, you know, we can continue despite the oppression that is coming from the federal government, I hope that we can continue to support gay rights, the LGBTQ-plus community, and we can carry on and march on because their rights are our rights. And when our rights and their, when their rights get taken away, our rights get taken away. So, you know, I want to wish everybody a happy Pride Month, be out there, celebrate, and be proud of who you are. It's, what makes us American unique is that we can be the people that we were born to be, and we should all be proud to be that. So, thank you all for listening, and again, have a happy Pride Month.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. Was brought up in public comment, the encampment over off of Pine Street Extension is getting bigger. I am over there a couple of times a week, and actually am friendly with some of the business owners over there, and also some of the folks on the Mine Falls Committee had reached out to me, and just some Word nine constituents had been walking, riding bikes, and they wanted to bring it to my attention, so I just wanted to take this opportunity to bring it up tonight, and I hope that the city can do something about it to alleviate the issue, and at least just to keep citizens over there in Mine Falls and the businesses, because sometimes they don't lock their doors, and those folks find their way inside. Sometimes it's early morning, late at night, and there are some safety concerns brought up by the business owner. So, I think it's important that we take a look at it and try to take some action. And to my colleague from Ward Seven, I was actually in Londonderry today, visiting Bosch Home Technology, and there was a brand-new New Hampshire orthopedic building that was going up, not two blocks away, and that was across the street from Stony Field Yogurt. So, I don't know what's in the water in Londonderry, but they're doing something. And, yeah, it is my hope that we can get some national or at least regional headquarters here in Nashua. So, thanks.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll start by just congratulating the graduates of Nashua South and Nashua North this week, especially my cousin Ben. He is graduating from Nashua South, will be swimming collegiately for Indiana University of Pennsylvania. In other news, DPW Summer Fun was great over the weekend. The rain held off thankfully, at least till the very end, so that was a positive. And Ward One is having a lot of paving done. If anybody has any issues in Ward One, please reach out. DPW and the paving contractors have been very helpful with any issues we've had so far. Thank you.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind everyone that the Tree Street Annual Block Party is this Saturday, and it's from, it's from one to six PM, and I hope all our, all the men get out there and go to the block party, and happy Pride Month to everybody that's out there. I respect what you're doing and what you are, and I'll be supporting you at every angle. But I'd like my colleagues to support the Tree Street Block Party this weekend.
Alderman O'Brien, I'll sit. Okay, I would like to send my condolences to Bill Frankwar and his family on the loss of his wife, Shelley Frankwar, who was a high school classmate of mine, a huge loss. And we can skip committee announcements because we've already done that. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Alderman meeting for Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, be so adjourned.
By roll call?
By roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
We are adjourned at nine twenty PM. Thank you, everyone.